Hey, I'll call to order the City Council Committee, the whole meeting. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Hazen? Hershey?
Here.
Jacobson? Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Thank you. Approve of the minutes of previous meeting. We didn't get any minutes from the previous meeting yet, so we'll have two sets to approve at our next committee of the whole meeting. Additions to the agenda? Are there any additions to the agenda? Nope. Presentations and public input. I'm not aware of any presentations. Are there any presentations? No. Okay, we do have a couple of public input cards. One is Reverend Dr. Evelyn D. Underwood. On the subject was the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. She chooses not to address members but asks that her position be entered into record. She is continuously concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Thank you. Second, we have Amory Gardner. Did you want to go ahead and make comment now? That's the only thing on the agenda you might as well talk on.
Hello, everyone. You probably remember me because I was here not too long ago. So I wanted to readdress the same thing I discussed before, which was recently the state had changed the law regarding allowing the sixth VGT machine. So I will keep this fairly brief. Last time I brought up, just to kind of quick recap, that with the changing of the law of the state, again, that there's three entities, how that revenue works. The state, the retailer, which is like the local businesses, including myself, and then the terminal operator. And with the passing of the law of allowing that sixth gaming terminal, they decreased the percentage that the retailers take in. So it does, with the ordinance of keeping it at the five machines, it does impact all of the local businesses, including the one that I work for, that we will be impacted if we are not allotted that sixth machine. An additional thing, though, that I wanted to bring up, with that additional percent going to the state, included with the state's percent, is also the local municipalities. So with that, with us getting less, if we were allotted to be able to get that sixth machine, something I didn't bring up is that actually would be a benefit, I believe, or I feel would be a benefit to you guys as well, because then that additional revenue would come back to all of you, well, not you personally, but to the residents and however you so chose, whether it be outreach programs, schools, roads, retirement. I mean, I don't know what your budget is or how you need it, but at least from other municipalities I've visited, it seems that there is a fair amount of revenue brought into the municipalities. So from my perspective, and hopefully yours, it would seem like it would be a win-win to help the local businesses, you know, bars, restaurants, all of those, to not lose their ability to cover their overhead and, you know, be a profitable business, to have that sixth machine, and then also have that little bit of extra to go wherever you guys would need it to go, to help your residents. And in addition, you know, give that added variety to people who want to play, so they're not wanting to go to Champaign or a casino or somewhere else. So I'm just here to make a plea that you guys would, I don't know, make a motion or however it is to get it on an agenda for discussion. And ask if you have any questions of me while I'm here.
Good, thanks.
And I would, of course, facilitate any questions in a discussion if you had them.
Any questions about the gaming for Amory? I think last time I asked, there was also could be increased payouts as part of that law. Did that go into effect yet?
I don't know what their plans are for that. Last I heard, it sounded like there was going to be some specific machines that they were getting ready to pass it on. I can get that information and get it back to you. Is there like an email that I can send you information to?
Yeah, I could get in touch with you, or I could probably look it up. I just, I hadn't gotten around to looking that up. I wondered if you knew.
Yeah.
And we also get revenue reports. I mean, we can download the revenue reports.
I could give you my card if you'd like, if you want to email me.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, I will do that, and I will look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So that's all the public input we have. Staff report? Are there any staff reports? Nope. Okay. So first and last and only is ordinance number 2020-02-005, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter Three, alcoholic liquor. This was presented two weeks ago, and been a few updates. Did you want to talk about this?
Sure. I'll just briefly introduce again and then turn it over to Kate Levy, who's the Deputy Local Liquor Commissioner, to review the changes that you had requested. So again, the purpose of this rewriting, and it's a complete rewrite of Chapter Three of our city code, which is our liquor code, it's to clarify the language, it's to make the code more responsive and more flexible. We're still maintaining compliance with the Illinois Liquor Control Commission Act. We're trying to reduce ambiguity, making it easier to have a fair and consistent compliance with our city code and respond to current and future business needs. So I wanted to again thank staff Kate and Jim Simon, Carol Mitten, and members of the community, the business community and the council for reviewing this and providing suggestions. So I'll turn it over to Kate, and she'll go over the changes that were made at your request. And this is included also in the memo.
Hi. Yep, so the memo was included in the packet along with our revisions to the code and the ordinance. So I'm just going to touch on what is already stated in the memo, and you'll see the memo includes the section numbers and the pages where you can find that information specifically. We did not copy out the entire section, but the relevant pieces that were updated. The first is, excuse me. We had some requests for an additional license to be placed into our classifications, a license that would enable businesses that didn't fit in our traditional categories to enter into a liquor license while they're exploring a new creative business model. So we've created this incubator license. It's a class Inc., and it will allow for a six-month period of getting your feet off the ground, seeing how it goes, and then at the end of that six-month period, they're then eligible for an additional six-month period. This gives not only the business owner a chance to fine-tune what they're trying to do, but also staff a chance to determine if a new license is warranted in the code and gives us time to research that possibility and potentially build on what has been presented in this incubator license, so that we can gather more potential businesses into that category. This helps us stay away from what has traditionally happened with the code, whereas one establishment would come up with an idea, we'd create a new license classification, it would just be put in the code, and then we would run into problems with inconsistencies. So this is our, this will be our attempt to open the door for some opportunities. We addressed concerns that were brought about allowing 18, 19, 20-year-olds indoor Class A establishments. When we met on February 3rd, we had proposed to change that to 19, and after public input and council input, we have reverted back to what we currently have in the code for the Class As, and that is to allow for 18, 19, 20-year-olds in those establishments after 9:00 PM without a parent or legal guardian, as long as the establishment provides in writing to the local commissioner that they're allowing that to happen. And then that reflects, too, on the rider that we created, the all-ages live entertainment events rider, that moves the age down to 17. We had proposed the 18, so it moves it down to 17. And so 14 to 17-year-olds can be in establishments with this rider without parents or legal guardians present, and they can be in the establishment an hour before a performance and an hour after a performance ends. The performance must end 11:00 PM is what we're suggesting. We had eliminated our different restaurant classifications and created a restaurant and tavern classification to house our establishments that do significant liquor and food sales. And at the time we proposed this, two weeks ago, we had a food-to-liquor sales ratio that we went back and looked at and made the decision to eliminate. So that is, that has been taken out of the code at this point. And just some other housekeeping items. The Basset Training Program, when that was set up by the state, they originally had given a 120-day grace period for servers to get their certification, and that was in 2018. That was just, that grace period was in order to let all the current servers have enough time to get in compliance. Since a few years have passed now, and it is a requirement, we're suggesting it just be reduced to the 30 days. It's probably in the best interest to have qualified, certified, trained servers in your establishment within a month, as opposed to a six-month period of time. And other items, we changed the Class F farmer's market license to a Class FM at the request of Councilperson Roberts. Thank you. And we defined the days allowed in our temporary licenses. We had failed to put that in the code, so that will be, the licenses for the temporary events can be for multiple-day events, eight-hour, eight consecutive-hour periods, and then you can apply to have an additional license for each day of your event. And also, a few of the requirements for our applicants. We used to have, we used to require that our managers of our establishments were U.S. citizens, and now we're removing that. We ran into a problem, I think it was last year's renewal cycle, when we realized that our code called for managers to be citizens, and we ended up having about a dozen in town that were green card holders, but they were not U.S. citizens. So we're removing that particular requirement, and the same state law says that if you're a sole proprietor applying for a liquor license, that you must be a resident of the municipality that you're applying in, and we've decided to strike that also from the requirements. We, at this point in time, do not have any sole proprietors. Recently, though, we have had inquiries about that, and so even someone who lived in Champaign then could not have an establishment in Urbana because of that restriction. So that's briefly the changes we've done. If anyone has any questions.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Kate? Dennis?
First, just, I'm going to comment real briefly, maybe for the benefit of the public. Maybe it's not necessary, but we're talking about the license which allows for all-age live entertainment event rider, and we're saying that we're going to be allowing persons from 14 to 17 to come into the bar or tavern for the event and watch the program or whatever. We're not allowing them to order liquor. We're just allowing them to come in and watch the event. There's still going to be the rules that are applied to underage drinking in those events.
Correct. And in the code, there are parameters in place in order to qualify to have that rider. There are things that the establishments need to provide to us, whether it's a security plan or how they're going to deal with wristbanding at certain ages.
So we're being aware of that, that possibility. I had two questions, really. I wasn't really sure if I picked up what the difference was in the microbreweries, the licensing. You have the Class MB for microbrewery, and then you have microbrewery II. And it seems like the definition for these are that they're manufacturing beer, ale, wine, and other malt-based liquors or whatever to be sold on the premises. So is the B2, so that you take it out of the premises and be selling it at catered events and hotels and some other places? Is that the difference between the two microbrewery license classifications?
Right. The MB1, the selling for the MB1, that's just to distributors. That's not for on-premise consumption.
Oh, I see. Would they, would most microbreweries be wanting to sell to distributor and also to customers?
Correct. And the two that we have in town currently, that's what they do. They both are under that MB2 license currently.
So they would come, so does you think, are you aware of anybody who would actually want an MB1 that is making wines and beers or whatever, completely for retail sale?
We're always hopeful.
Okay, all right. That answers that. You're imagining if there's a location, opportunity for that. The other question I had was one that's, I was just sort of wondering, we do have these service licenses for outdoor events and temporary events. So if you were going to have a fundraiser at a soccer tournament or a sporting event in a park, what license would you want to be asking for?
I guess first we need to know who's applying for it.
Okay.
If it is a current license holder, or, I mean, that's the separation between the two at this point. The temp C for the current license holders, the temp N for non-licensed holders. Where the event will be, whether it's a private event, whether it's open to the public. I mean, there are several different questions that need to be answered. Do you want to give me some more details?
No, I just was thinking of what if, you know, I mean, I was trying to imagine, at sporting events or whatever, if people were starting to wish to sell refreshments, you know, what would, how would they be classified? I wasn't sure where they would fall in among the various license possibilities.
Well, I guess the closest we can liken that to is maybe our Sweet Corn Festival or the Miles at the Pines that they do, and we have someone like Riggs that would get a temporary liquor license to sell and serve during those events.
So we're not really specifying like what kind of event or where the event takes place. If it was in a city park, that would be something that they would have to work out with the park district, too, of course.
Correct.
Right.
Each of these special events seems to be, it's almost a custom approach.
Unique.
I mean, it'll fit into the framework, but you really need to sit down and provide a lot more detail before we figure out exactly what kind of license it would be.
Overall, it looks like this is rather useful direction for our liquor licensing. I mean, it's a little more creative, and I guess it responds to some of the questions that I know Jared's brought up and other retailers have been representing to us, so it looks like we're going to try it out and see how this works, should the vote go that way.
Should the vote, yeah.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
So there is a section on who's allowed to work in terms of age restrictions, and it seemed to me, if I could summarize it really quickly, if you're 19, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, if you're 19 and over, you can be a bartender and do just about everything that is related to serving and selling alcohol, and if you're 18, the only thing you can do is serve it and then take payment, but you can't be a bartender. Is that correct? That was my reading of it.
Can you refer to the page?
It might be 3.25.
Section 3.25?
Section 3.25. It's on page nine.
I think this is where we matched the parameters that the City of Champaign had in place. I think that's where those particular ages came from. I'd have to double-check, and Jim is not here at the moment.
So just, sorry.
Mary Alice, the biggest difference between A and B is that A is talking about off-premise consumption. You have to be 19 to sell alcohol to people who walk out of a store with it or walk out of it in package form. That last part of that phrase where it says off-premise, in the 18, you can be an 18-year-old and get a beer from the bartender, pour a beer at the bar, and take it to somebody at your table for on-premise consumption.
My reading is you can't pour a beer. The only thing you can do is serve it and accept payment.
Yeah, that's right. You can't be the bartender.
You can't mix it, you can't pour it, you can't draw it.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's right.
But you can serve it.
But the bartender could give it to you, you could take it on the tray to the person at the table.
Correct, correct. So if you're a server, you're not limited by your age, between 18 and 19. Of course, 17 and 16-year-olds can't do that.
Correct. You have to be an adult.
And so does that also mean that we have, I think Myers came and asked us to be able to, for people to pick up packaged liquor by the curbside? Does that mean that you have to be 19 or older to be able to drop off that grocery?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Have you ever been to Walmart and bought a bottle of wine and had to wait for 20 minutes for somebody that's, seriously, that's like 19 to ring you up?
Check your ID.
They don't even allow anybody.
Yeah, you're not allowed to.
Yeah, they're not allowed to even do that, so.
Gotcha. Okay, and then we had a conversation about curfew last time, and I seem to remember saying that if you were 17 and younger, that only on Friday and Saturday can you be on the streets after 11:00 PM, but I can't remember. And then you had to be on the streets or home before 11:00 PM, but Sunday through Thursday. Does anybody remember that? Because if that's the case, then we're going to have to amend this, because they're allowed to be in the premise until midnight on any day of the week.
Interesting catch. Well, they can be, but.
But they have to get home.
Their parents can make sure they leave earlier than.
They still have to be on the street.
Correct.
And so I'm just wondering if.
Well, this isn't related to curfew. This is, this was in direct request to what council wanted two weeks ago.
I totally understand. I'm just trying to figure out if we're going to make people who are under the age of 18 illegal on the streets if they're at a show that ends at 11:00 PM, without their parents picking them up.
I'll go upstairs and get our curfew ordinance, so that everybody has it.
Perhaps we could just bring it wherever this moves and make that amendment if needed. I mean, you don't have to do that, I guess is what I'm saying, but if we could follow up with that, that would be good. And then, so open alcohol. So there's a whole discussion about if you go to a restaurant and you bring, and you have a bottle of wine that is not finished, you can take it out, even though it is open, if it's in a sealed, transparent bag. So that says to me that is the only time you are allowed to remove an open bottle of alcohol from any premise. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so the only thing that you're allowed to have in your trunk, because you can't have that, can you have it in your passenger area? Or do you have to have it in your trunk?
I think it's in your trunk.
So the only open bottle, regardless if you get it from someplace that you're purchasing at, a restaurant or a bar or something, is if you get it from a restaurant specifically and you have it in that particular bag. I just want to make sure. Otherwise, you cannot have an open bottle of liquor in your car anywhere, regardless if it's in your trunk or not. I don't know.
Are you talking about the BYOB? Which one are you talking about?
I did not write down the page for that. I apologize.
Because I'm trying to, trying to figure that one out.
Perhaps that's a question for the police department at a later date. But according to this, you can only remove open alcohol from a restaurant in the clear bag. That's what I read from here.
Correct. And this ordinance deals with alcohol purchased at the restaurant.
Right, right.
We can't control what people do with things they bring from home or from a private party or something like that.
So that, my question is with the, do we call it the pedal bus, the pedal bicycle?
Pedal bus.
Pedal bus, all right. So if you have to bring your alcohol to the pedal bus, because they can't sell you alcohol, but they can serve you alcohol in the pedal bus.
Correct.
So if you don't finish your bottle of wine, you have to throw it away. That's what it sounds like to me, because they're not a restaurant.
So you're asking, can they take it home from the pedal bus?
Correct.
Does that ever happen?
I don't know if people ever have alcohol left over from the pedal bus.
We don't have pedal buses yet in Urbana. So your question is what happens to the open bottles?
From the pedal bus.
From pedal bus.
And perhaps if the answer is this doesn't cover it, maybe we want to institute the same rules that we do for restaurants, but that's up to council. All right, last but not least, my last question is, the very last section, which I think is 3.2, sorry, 362, is reporting of revenue on a monthly basis? I'm sorry.
I do see in the pedal bus license, right, alcoholic liquor served aboard a pedal bus may only be served in plastic foam or paper cups, but I'm not sure what indicates how it can be brought aboard. This is another, probably Jim Simon has some further input on this.
What page is it, Kate?
Page 24.
It doesn't seem like it's in this particular license code, but the transportation.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't address transportation of unconsumed alcohol.
Right.
So that's what we're looking at. Okay.
Yes, correct.
We can follow up on that.
And my last question, is it new that we are asking restaurants and bars to report their monthly sales? Is that a new thing on what, 6.2?
No.
That's not new. I couldn't find it in the existing code. But it's. But it's possibly there. I did a search for revenue and it doesn't exist in the existing code.
Right. It should be under, in the current code, is it under the Class R licenses? It's also under the catering licenses that they're required to submit that information. It should be under the restaurant licenses as well.
Okay, but this, this is more, so we're expanding it?
We're eliminating the ratio, the 60/40.
No, I understand, but the, in terms of filing revenue returns, are we expanding the number of licensees that have to report it by month?
For the, if you want to, so currently, our Class R license holders, there's a special line on our food and beverage tax forms that they have to fill out. That is to ensure that they qualify to hold the Class R license. So this new classification of the R and T licenses, that would be the same concept.
But with the current license, we only do the gross revenues for the year. We don't do it by the month. Unless I'm not reading this correctly. Maybe we could just double-check that. Okay. I mean, just, it would be good to know if we're, we're increasing what we're asking the licensees to report to us.
I mean, I know that they file a food and beverage form monthly. It's due the 30th of the, of the following month for the month prior.
For tax purposes.
Right. I just didn't find it in the existing code. I couldn't find it. But it's possible that it's there. It's 60-some on pages.
We know.
I don't think it's in that part of the code, Mary Alice. I think it's in the fee, the fee schedule or somewhere else in the code. I know, I, I know I just have to do it every month, so.
It's required. It may not be part of the liquor code.
I don't think it's part of the liquor code. I think it's elsewhere in the, in the city code.
Teresa?
Well, while we're having, discussing the liquor stuff, I wanted to also kind of look at the video gaming area. I'm sorry, what's your name again? Amory Gardner. Ms. Gardner was discussing, I noticed that it says that there can't be more than five video gaming, video games, and, which was, I think, fine when the, when the state only allowed five video games. But if it's gonna cause a revenue shift on some level with the owners, and everyone knows I'm not a big video gaming fan, okay? I'm, I'm, I put that disclaimer out there right now, but at the same time, I also don't want to see our businesses, because we have so many in my ward. But I, I don't want to see business leave either if we cannot allow for six video gaming terminals. Is that going to be an issue? Or is that something that can be amended as needed?
Mayor Marley?
That's a policy issue, so it's, it shouldn't be part of this discussion of the liquor ordinance. Video gaming is in the liquor ordinance because the state requires every video gaming parlor or video gaming operator to have a liquor license. But if the council wants to discuss the changing policy, which is a separate policy from this code, that would be a separate discussion.
But it can be amended within this?
Yeah, if, if the city council decides to increase the number of video gaming terminals allowed in an establishment from five to six, then the liquor code would be changed to reflect that. But it's not something that should be done through the liquor code. It should be done as a separate policy discussion.
I'm, that's why I'm just bringing it up and wondering if there's any, any possibility for amendment with that policy.
In order, yeah. Now, in order to get an item brought before the council for discussion, you, you need to have two council members' requests that it be put on the agenda for discussion.
Okey-dokey. Good to know. Okay, and the other thing, does the, and this is regarding, because I was trying and, and doing a quick read of everything, you know, for this week, but I know one of the, the reasons why we kind of were redoing the liquor ordinance in the first place was the, I'm trying to find where it says no video gaming with the packaging, like liquor stores, or is there any, is that in here? Because I was trying to.
Yes, that's, yes, that's provided for.
The rider wouldn't be available for that, right?
Right. The rider is not available for video gaming terminals and packaged liquor stores. So that addresses the issue that was brought up earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Jared?
I'll make a motion if council's done with questions. Okay, I'll move ordinance number 2020-02-005, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 3 with regard to alcoholic liquor forward to the full council with a recommendation for approval pending some of these updates that we'll get next week for clarification.
Is there a second? Yeah, I guess I would do that.
It's moved by Jared and seconded by Dennis.
Do we think that we're ready for moving it forward? We'll find out.
Any discussion?
Mayor.
Mayor Marley?
I just want to make sure I've got the list of things you want clarified. One is what happens to the leftover alcohol from pedal buses? If it can be transported or does it have to be destroyed? We'll look at curfew hours in conjunction with, with the live entertainment. And was there a question about the open bottle from a restaurant? Or no? No, okay. So those two issues. Okay.
Any other discussion? No? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.